Good evening. This special meeting of the Board of Education for April 14th, 2015 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. And the meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Director Morton is absent this evening. All right, so we'll get started with public comment. Ms. Hewson, who do we have signed up for public comment tonight?
We have two this evening. Jed DeSilva and Amy Jeffrey.
Welcome. And I know you've been here before, so you already know the guidelines. Three minutes, two minutes after the yellow light comes on, and then when the red light comes on, we respectfully ask that you wrap up your comments. Thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate it. Go ahead.
Silva. I'm a parent at Rigger Elementary School and a PTA board member in the Latino community liaison. Pretty much my job is to bring back and forth issues from the community, interpret and translate for them. I wrote something, and I'll try to read it really quick, though I didn't finish the draft in the whole letter. I do want to talk about substitutes, but I'll come back the next board meeting to talk about it. I was asked to come by the Latino community, Latino parents, to bring a letter regarding asking the board to investigate mental illness and our counselor at the Rigger Elementary School who wants to commit suicide. She has expressed it. We have some evidence. She did brought it up to the-
Ma'am, excuse me. You're not allowed to discuss personnel matters.
Okay, we won't. Parents feel that they're not, these Latino parents feel that they're not being heard, and there's been some issues. They have brought up some of these issues to the principal and to also labor consultants on the Pat Union, and we still haven't heard anything. It's an understanding that there is one or two or three people who don't like the accountability, and they are picking on Latino principal and also Latino parents. They've been filing union complaints. The district office responses only makes matters worse. I did file a couple complaints already with the district, but I haven't heard from them. I hope to meet with the, I'm sorry, I'm not going to say the name. I hope to meet with my, with our principal supervisor next week to go over the first complaints we have. The district has came the last week and said that 50% of the staff signed letter regarding the district, but it was only 15% that they got. They got the PTA pretty upset by misinforming them. We haven't heard anything from teachers. We would like to hear what's going on with teachers and, you know, so we can support them. If there is two or three dissatisfied employees with questionable performances should not be influencing the school climate in such a way, in such a negative way. If these three people are having, or they are hating having a Latina principal so much, they should be moved or investigated. I personally have a daughter who, she's been going to counseling at Rigger, and I am concerned about this counselor who might have some issues.
Again, please, we're not going to discuss personnel matters this morning.
Sure. So my question, one of my questions is why does the central office staff overreact so quickly when two or three staff are complaining, then dismiss the parents' complaints, our complaints, the Latino parents who brought up these questions, and they fail to hear from the school, most veteran teachers and other people? And there is more, so if you guys are interested in hearing more, I will be happy to present evidence, comments, bring more parents, and I'll turn over the signatures of parents asking for the principal, who is a Latina, to stay and also asking for the investigation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Good evening. My name's Amy Jeffrey, and I am a parent of two children, one at Grant High School, Emily, and one at Alameda Elementary, Grant High School, Alameda Elementary, yeah, Abigail. I wanted to show my strong support for Reach 2020, which is the district's plan to move to a fully inclusive school model. On behalf of families across the district, I say that the time is past for segregation, unequal access to core curriculum, and lack of belonging. The time is now to embrace educational principles and practices that are proven to help all kids learn, from those labeled tag, like my older daughter, to those receiving special education services, like my younger daughter. Inclusive education, universal design for learning, and cultural competency are best practices, proven to increase test scores for all children and foster classrooms where all children belong and thrive. PPS unfortunately has a long history of throwing good money at a system of segregation, low expectations, and unequal access, shown starkly in our abysmal on-time graduation rates, especially for kids in special education, which I looked up this morning and it was 50% last year. Why would we continue to invest in poor outcomes and outdated models, which not a single study has shown to benefit our children? There's a better way, and it's inclusive education. We moved here in 2010 from New Jersey with our then-fifth grader Emily and our first grader Abigail. Emily was absorbed into her new school immediately with little to no fanfare. Abigail, however, had a different experience. We had to fight for inclusion before we'd even walked into a classroom. Meetings on whether she belonged at the school. Assessments that used outdated terminology and were deficit-based. Teachers who had not been adequately prepared for her, and three different aides, all with different levels of experience, contributed to a year of unfortunate stress transition and limited progress. I cried, she cried. What convinced me not to give up was knowing that the long-term success of my child depended on that inclusive placement with its access to core curriculum content and to peers, those kids who loved Abigail from the moment she walked into that school. I wasn't willing to sacrifice her economic future or the chance for her to build true friendships like her sister Emily, whose right to belong was never in question. There's a quote that says, "You can build a ramp to get anyone into a building, but it's truly attitude that facilitates real inclusion." It's a shift in that attitude that led directly to our daughter's success. Abigail's teachers since second grade have welcomed her with open arms. Communication between all the staff has been greatly improved, and I am treated as an equal member of that education team. My daughter hit every goal set for her. Her reading and math scores blossomed. She accessed the core curriculum. She belonged. She belongs. In June, she's going to be clapped out with 130 other fifth graders at Alameda who believe in her right to belong. Her teachers believe it. They've all told me that they believe it and have more, but I just wanted to wrap up and say that I think there has been some public comment that isn't reflective of my experience. And I have a child that definitely has significant learning disabilities, and she is fully included and thriving, and it is our right and her right to belong, and that's what we must do here at PPS. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so next, we're going to have some comments from the Portland Association of Teachers. Our contract with PAT allows some time on our agenda as requested, so I'd like to ask Suzanne Cohen, Vice President of PAT, down at the speaker's table at this time for some brief comments. So welcome Suzanne.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to talk a little bit about the budget presentation for SMT and just say what a relief that was to see after years of being cut to the bone, so much restoration being made. So that was a huge relief. Really supportive of more adults in the building. School secretaries will help with safety and all the concerns that we've had. Also really appreciate the, listening to the recommendations of the workload committee and taking that into consideration has been really great. One of our recommendations was about a subpool for educational assistance, and we are a little concerned that just five will not actually maybe help with that workload issue. So we appreciate it. We're wondering if a greater number might actually help resolve some of the issues with getting adequate substitute coverage for educational assistance. Another concern is the hiring of high school teachers. So currently, as per our contract, and I brought copies for you in our workload, we're on a three-year glide path to restore us to the 2010, 2011 areas. And we started off well last year with the hiring of teachers, but by only hiring 20 high school teachers this year, we're going to be put in a position next year where we have to hire a significant amount of high school teachers. So then it won't quite be a glide path, but crash. Another concern is the state's rules of 80% of students meeting 990 minutes, or instructional hours. And so, and I brought that document for you too. So with the current six-of-eight schedule and students being encouraged to take eight classes, the result would be that we would need to hire even more teachers next year. So one recommendation would be to start that transition this year by hiring more high school teachers or going to a five-of-seven schedule, which would allow us to be in compliance with the contract and state. So whichever way the decision goes, one thing that I would like to make sure is that next year, it isn't that because of PAT or PAT's contract that we find ourselves in a hiring issue around high school schedules. Finally, and please don't quote me on this, we do agree with the Oregonian on something. But we do support the hiring of an external auditor for administrative salaries and, okay. So, and then also, I just haven't seen tonight's budget presentation. I'm looking forward to it. But do want to say that also, we really appreciate all the opportunities for public to give comment, all the different town halls, all the different listening sessions. I think we're on a really right path, so thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, so next on the agenda, we have a presentation from All Hands Raised, so I want to welcome Dan Ryan, Executive Director at All Hands Raised, down to the table. Welcome, Dan.
Hi, welcome.
Carol, did you have any introductory comments or just want to wait after Dan's presentation?
I'll wait for Dan's presentation, but I'm excited to hear it.
Welcome.
Getting myself settled in. Good evening, Co-Chair Atkins and Knowles and members of the board and Superintendent Smith. It's an honor, first of all, to be here, and thank you for, I want to acknowledge, first of all, the historic partnership that this organization and PPS has had for over 20 years, when this board took action that was bold and courageous then and continues to be the best practice in how we do private fundraising in the public school system. And then I also want to acknowledge your leadership, your bold leadership in 2010, when you decided that equity is always going to be first and foremost, and that it was time to stretch this organization to include all the kids in Moconoma County, so we could follow the patterns of flow of poverty and really work together as a team in Moconoma County. So thanks again for your vision, your leadership, and your continuing voice in this process. Where the right arrow, right here. So there's our footprint. You all know it. Now it's Moconoma County. Yes, you're the biggest part of that chunk. You're over 50%, both of landmass and also the students. And I think you know these demographics better than anyone, and that is the breakdown of our demographics also in terms of the amount of poverty and the kids that we have of color and as we become a majority-minority population in 0-18. And so there's just a little breakdown. This is all in Chapter Two. What we also like to highlight is that we have a community-wide dashboard, and it's really just a way at the very big picture level to see how we're doing as a community. I always like to repeat, as a community, this work was premised on the fact that the finger pointing must stop. This isn't about blaming the schools, blaming teachers, for God's sake. It's about all of us coming together to wrap ourselves around the children, around the schools, because we all know that the achievement gap that we've been talking about for decades now really accelerates in the evenings and the weekends and in the summers. So this work is about a community-wide effort, working with the county, working with the nonprofit organizations. So those are the 12 community-wide indicators. And then the work teams are the flags that you'll see that really are now zeroing in on the transition points, K1, 8, 9, and the new one, which is high school to college and career. And then big picture is attendance and also disproportionate discipline and the equity This is my favorite slide. I'd like it to be everyone's favorite slide. It's to acknowledge that if we're really honest, we work in a world that's pretty much in a disarray and disorder, and there's a lot of inefficiency in terms of how different organizations work with one another. And so in order to really take collaboration to a new level of methodical engineering, if you will, and really get alignment, we really believe in the continuous improvement style of management and how we build the system. And so it's very important for us that we align our practices and really take time to figure out what practices work, and more importantly, what practices don't work. And so really getting down to the granular level. I like to use the sports analogy. Bear with me for a second. I'm sure a lot of you have been to the Moda Center to watch a Blazer game, so, and you all know what the score is. That's one thing. That's kind of like the big community-wide indicators. But if you really want to know why the score exists there or why a certain team is catching up, it's because you look at the hustle board. So you look at how they're doing on rebounds and assists and steals, and that's kind of what we're trying to measure. What is going on underneath the big picture instead of just admiring whatever that big indicator is? What are the actions that were, that are taking place in our schools? Why is it that one school is getting such better results than another? Well, if you take some time to listen to what they're doing, you might see that they just have practices that are, that are, that are working in a way that another school's not. So we're just trying to put the spotlight on where those are and learn from them. If this isn't about another big rolling agenda from afar, another silver bullet, it's about finding right here in Moconoma County the good work that is taking place and scaling that up. So there's just another version of that, plan, do, check, act. The good news about this is we're always improving. The challenge is that it's never enough, so we all just have to continue to know that there's always room for improvement. And that's what we expect from our kids, and we certainly need to start expecting that from our adults. So there are the different sites around the county. We call them demonstration sites. We call them labs. It's real important to identify schools throughout the county where we can actually go deep and actually measure these practices and before we scale up. I think too often, what we've found is that we scale up the goal, we scale up the strategy, and if that was helpful and useful, then we would have been solving things years ago. So we're trying to take more time to really measure and look at what is working before we scale up. And that's why, in fact, we have these demonstration site schools. In PPS, those are some of the schools that are identified, and that would be George Middle. You see them, James John and Woodlawn. But we also have sites for ninth grade counts throughout. This is, again, all in your Chapter Two, but as you can see, there are many sites. Back to the work in terms of the work teams, one of the first things we're measuring because there was basically a sleepy program in Moconoma County that deserved more attention. So with the good work of all of us coming together, we focused on kindergarten registration. It was actually quite astonishing what would happen once you actually got work teams that would go out to apartment buildings and meet with people and try to get them to sign their kids up in the, in May and in June. And a lot of our population that we want to serve, that needs the most service, are the ones that were most vulnerable to this. And many times, their children weren't starting until October. And so this is really good bump. Once we put some alignment together countywide, we saw these bumps. And then you can see at your demonstration site schools, the same bump in activity. That's pretty outstanding at James John.
Wow. That's great.
And I'm just having a moment right now noticing how cool that we finally have a PowerPoint that does this. I didn't know that. Look at that. Isn't this fun? I'm having so much fun. I just want you to know. And then you could see at Woodlawn, we have great results as well. So it's, there was not a lot of new taxpayer money for any of this work. It was just, again, about galvanizing our labor in a different way and focusing. We also have a big picture of work going on around attendance, and there you can see the bump in countywide focus. A lot of, there's always, we always see a big bump, or at least a little bit of a decent bump, once it just becomes a focus and when it becomes a school-wide priority. And then you could see at the demonstration site schools at George, which is the demonstration site school for PPS. In our disproportionate discipline is a practice area that we're looking at, working countywide with all six superintendents and six leaders from culturally-specific organizations. We're building trust to figure out what practices will work, and that's in our eliminating disparities collaborative. Going down is actually progress on this slide. I know it's not intuitive, so I wanted to make that point at this moment in time because everyone was doing the same face that I did when I first looked at it. Ninth grade counts feels like it's been around a long time. It's in its fourth summer, will be its fifth one coming up. And what we find out with this cohort when we measure the data is that the same academic priority kids that were participating, that if you participate in ninth grade counts, there's a seven to 12-point differential in success rate your freshman year of high school. And success for us is six credits because that's the indicator, of course, that you're on time to graduate. The fifth and final collaborative work team that we're actually launching right now is the high school to college and career. This is just actually a really sobering pipeline, pathway-type slide that shows how much work we have to do. And if you break it down by race, it's quite sobering for our Latino population, which of course is our economic prosperity opportunity. And so this just measures who has actually credentials and career, which we identify as an associate's degree and above. The two strategy areas that were identified are both, in both tracks. Many sites around the country are actually choosing one, a college track or a career track. We felt it was impossible to choose, so it's an, it's an and both. And you can see that in strategy one, it starts with FAFSA completion rates. And I have a prop. Where'd it go? Has anyone seen a FAFSA application lately? There's murmurs in the audience. I don't know where I put it. Anyway, it's, it gives you a headache, and it's amazing how many people cannot fill them out, even those that are, I was, I was speaking with attorneys today, 40 of them, and they rolled their eyes, and a lot of them said they couldn't handle it. These are people that, that, you know, completed the bar and went through law school. So anyway, that's a big challenge, and we leave a lot of money on the table, especially for our children who need the money the most. And the other one is, just like ninth grade counts, that first year of college is so important, and the college culture really has never had systems in place that adequately address that. So I know in K-12, there are systems in place to address that retention rate, and now it's time to focus on that for our students in college as well. And then, of course, what I think is near and dear to everyone's hearts because it's such a priority is the, actually the crisis we have in not filling manufacturing jobs and skilled labor jobs. And so it's imperative to have strategy two. The focus there was just decided recently is on construction and manufacturing. Here's FAFSA rates throughout the, throughout the district. We send this out weekly, which is pretty exciting that we actually could do that now to gather that data weekly. There's wonderful activity that's already brewing. There's FAFSA squads. There was a YouTube sent out recently from action that was taking place at Franklin High School, where you're seeing great results. And then again, the data agreements that allow us to get real-time data once a week. And all this work is about the middle space, whether, All Hands Raised basically has elbowed its way into this lane that's in the middle, and we really think that it's needed and wanted because I think whether we like it or not, we've kind of always had this little bit of a hamster wheel where we have a lot of big decisions made. Nothing's good or bad about this, but big decisions made with big dollars and sometimes some big ideas that sometimes only last about three years. And then we have all the practitioners chasing that money, and then for some reason, we think that you have to prove everything within three years. I had the opportunity to speak to people in the business sector this morning, and I said, "What if you only got three years to do your research and development, implement your new ideas to make your profit margins?" You know that would never work. You need many more years than three years. So I think it's really important that we start to get to some sanity with how we treat the education sector and acknowledge that implementation takes years and years of implementation. And as long as we plan, do, check, act, and think about it a little bit differently, we can get away from these rolling reforms and these three-year cycles of madness. We have so many partners at PPS that are part of this work. When we really have to get down to the brass tacks of our business plan, what we're trying to do at All Hands Raised is provide pro bono professional development and technical assistance services in continuous improvement, management, and change. And we think that we're on to something, but it only works if there's willingness from the members and the partners at the table. And under Superintendent Smith's leadership, there's a lot of willingness from PPS, and we're grateful. Last but certainly not least, over 20 years, we've been your partner at making sure that we have the best system in place on how to collect and steward the investments that come from the parent community and to make sure that those go to the schools based on a data-driven formula that are most deserving of those dollars. And there's the data from this year. There are some photos because it's always nice to see photos. And I'll go back to the photos, and I'm going to have, now Shay, I've, I've asked if Shay James could join me at this time because I thought it would be really important to have someone else up here to answer questions, especially about the new area that we're launching, which is high school to college and career. And so because it's at the early stage, getting feedback and insight from all of you that I know have a lot of passion about this collaborative would be really helpful. And so I'm grateful that you were willing to join this dialogue at this time. And in her role at the district, Superintendent Smith has identified Ms. James as a liaison that will work with All Hands Raised as we do this work, which is, again, launching as we speak. But you can ask questions on anything.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Director Buell.
Dan, was the money you were talking about that got left on the table, was that the state money that got left on the table for the scholarship?
It's the FAFSA money, the data-
There's some, there's a lot of state money, and I don't know the particulars of it, but there was, you know, several millions of dollars that got left that we could have used, somebody could have used for college, for kids.
Yeah.
Is that this money you're talking about?
Director Buell, it's the money that, when you look at the face, the FAFSA data and who does not fill out the forms, too often it's children and families that would, are of need, and the student would qualify, but the big barrier is literally filling out that complicated form. And so we need more support services to, for the students, so in their senior year, they actually fill those out in time. And so the money that's left on the table is that there's too many students and families that just miss out on that, on those dollars.
It was tens of millions of dollars, as I remember.
Yeah, it's a very large sum.
And are we doing that now through the career coordinator people?
Yeah, we are actually doing some intentional work around FAFSA for students who haven't traditionally filled it out, and Nicole Capps Levine has led that under Dr. Dare's department. We're collaborating to try to figure out how to push it further, but each counseling group at every school have, has identified really specific targets of how, the percentage of students that they want to fill out the FAFSA this year, and they are tracking them. They are going after it. We had, as he mentioned, the FAFSA party at Franklin, and we're trying to do some more intentional, you know, items like that as, as we move forward with it. So I think it's going to keep getting better, but there's been a lot of work around it this year.
And it's something that if you really go upstream with that, there was a study done at, in Michigan where they did a, they did an inventory, if you will, of all of the colleges that were training counselors in our schools, and there were, there was not one class, at least in the state of Michigan, that was training people on how to do financial aid counseling with their students. So there's a reason why there's some gaps here. So it really goes to even the training of our counselors who have a lot on their plate already, but it would make sense that we provide more training and professional development in this area.
And, and I would just add that we have some pretty incredible partners that are doing work around the FAFSA as well, that I think is going to continue to grow as we strategically align. Latino Network is doing some great things. We've just partnered with College Possible, Avid. So there's, you're going to see some improvement with hopefully not leaving money on the table.
And our goal is to help galvanize that and provide kind of a campaign atmosphere going into next year. And so it becomes more on everyone's mind, again, the whole community. It's a great way to get some volunteers engaged.
Director Knowles?
So since Dan asked you to come up in your role as working with the CTE, I feel that we have to ask you exactly what is it that we're doing with All Hands Raised with regard to career technical education and-
Yeah, we actually had our first meeting a few weeks ago with some folks, Nate Washul and Kara, I'm not sure her last name, but, and looking at the career and technical education, we've kind of laid out what, where we're going, what we're doing, and have now set up another meeting to see how we can, again, more intentionally partner and move that forward. So it's just getting started, but we're heading there.
So when you talk about partnerships, are you including the business community and how we can pull them in? I know we're working on that in the committee here, but is there also, I know there are lots of business leaders on the All Hands Raised board, and so I'm wondering about that kind of a synergy.
We are headed down that road, so yes, you will see that, yeah, just not quite there yet, but we are moving in that direction.
Yeah, and on our board and in our committee, we have both manufacturing and the union construction world, so trades as well. The- The apprenticeship programs are desperately in need of new, younger people getting into the pipeline, as you all know. There's another slide that I don't have on here just about how Oregon, specifically Portland, does not do a good job of growing its own. So the amount of imported talent that we need to fill our jobs in Portland is twice the number of the rest of the country. And that speaks a lot to why we need to stay focused on this work because too many of our employers have to seek.
Agreed.
Employees outside of the city.
Director Bilal?
I just wanted to thank All Hands Raised for so long as the Portland Public Schools Foundation, really addressing the equity and been a great partner. And to my understanding, or my understanding is that to play this new role as kind of a community convener, there weren't additional resources from us or the foundations, that this is additional resource that you went out and sought because you recognized the need. And this, the atmosphere and the community belief that's being instilled through this work of that this isn't a school district or this isn't a one partner or one principal's responsibility, this is us as a community coming together. And engaging both businesses and nonprofits to align because there's lots of funding out there and everybody seems to be, as your favorite slide point right, heading in every direction, but nobody really kind of guiding a ship to see, can we make one big community impact? Can we really change these outcomes for everybody? And you referenced Chapter Two, and I don't know if everybody here knows, Chapter Two is kind of your print update on this work. Thank you. And I recommend everybody take an opportunity to read through it and when you have the events that you invite the community to, I hope members of the board will engage because it's really exciting work and they are really looking at the span from early childhood, and when I say early childhood, it's when a child is born or before, to success after whatever the education is at the end. So I just wanted to say thank you for your work on that and thank you to, you saw the number of staff that are engaged in this work. It requires a high level of engagement from all the districts across the county, which is additional, but I appreciate our stepping into that to say, yes, this is the right direction and this is how we have to partner if we're going to move outcomes for our entire community. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Bilal. And by the way, this, Chapter Two is, I put it up there where I think I'm supposed to put things for the, so it's for the public. And there's also some in the back. And I, we mailed these to you a couple of weeks ago to Oliver, did you get them?
Yes, I read it.
Oh, they're all shaking their heads. This is good. All right. Cameron, did you pick that up?
The U.S. Mail Store.
Oh, the little things, yeah. Any other questions?
Other questions?
No, I'd just like to also appreciate your leadership, Dan, because I think because this is what we're doing in Portland, we cannot remember that it's actually nationally stands out of who is sitting at our table and that they continue to sit at our table. And in Portland, we disbanded a couple of other organizations like Leaders Roundtable, which had been around for 30 years, and our Mayor's Education Cabinet in order to collectively form this one table where we all come together, but it's the mayor, it's the county chair, it's our university presidents, our business leaders, our nonprofits, and the six districts that serve the city of Portland so that we're really talking about all our kids and the role that all of us play. And it's a big deal that we came together and figured out these are the few things we're going to focus on and the common metrics we're going to track so that we all get where we fit. And, but we hear from other folks from around the country who come and see who's sitting at our table and that we're still there. I mean, and people are still there and we're still working on it. The collaborative that just started, we've been hungry for this for, like I'm going to say, the superintendents, they've been clamoring for this so that we don't all independently go build a separate system, but that we're doing it collectively. And there was some discipline in not getting ahead of our skis on this one and really doing the, have the infrastructure ready to take it on at the point we're taking it on so we can do the quality job that we're trying to do. So that, I just want to say thank you to you, Dan, for your leadership and your team. You've done a great job with us.
Well, thank you, Superintendent Smith. You do a much better elevator speech on our work than I ever could. What I brought for all of you, an old teacher's trick, I didn't give it to you before I started speaking, this is all of the data broken down within the PPS district. So it's a drill down, deep dive into PPS specifically, and information on the Equity Grant Awards for the spring. So.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you so much. All right. Excellent. Okay, so next up, we have our business agenda. We'll now consider the business agenda. Ms. Houston, are there any changes?
Yes, there are two.
Okay.
On page three of the business agenda, Resolution 5058 has been pulled.
Okay. Whoops, hold on. Okay.
The next change is on page six.
Okay.
The last contractor, Baldwin General.
Yep.
The contract amount should be $1,920,800.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. So do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Director Knowles moves. And Director Regan seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, any public comment tonight? All right, any board discussion on the board agenda, on business agenda, excuse me? Director Buell?
I'd like to ask Superintendent to explain Mythic's contract.
On page six.
It's a first on page six. It's the first one on page six. Says PeopleSoft Enterprise Benefits Administration and.
This looks like an IT.
It's an IT. And is Josh, you want to come on up and do this one, Josh? So Josh Klein, who's our Chief Information Officer.
Josh Klein, Chief Information Officer. What was your, can you repeat your question, Director Buell?
Just explain maybe what it is.
This is a purchase of perpetual licenses and the first year maintenance for an expansion of our Human Resources PeopleSoft environment. So it would add electronic benefit administration and electronic recruitment modules to our PeopleSoft environment.
What's an electronic recruitment module?
It's basically the piece of software that individuals use to apply for a job with the district.
So the ones we're using now are outdated or?
The products, the product we're currently using is called Searchsoft and it's not meeting our needs anymore. It's an inferior product and we're trying to move to something more modern and integrated.
What needs does it not meet?
I mean, that's probably a better answer for some of the Human Resources staff than me. It's, the product hasn't been well-maintained by the vendor. It doesn't integrate with our existing systems and it doesn't have any support for affirmative action reporting or really any other detailed reporting on our recruitment pools, the individuals that are actually applying for jobs. We can't get good data out of that system.
Good evening, Board Member. Sean Murray, Chief Human Resources Officer. Exactly what Josh Klein just said, I mean, it's antiquated system. It's very difficult to generate reports that are needed, that are required by law or required by state in terms of helping us to move our recruitment process to the next level as well. In doing searches for applicant tracking system, it's a very difficult system to use. It's not very user-friendly and it's very dated.
Were we breaking the law with the old system? You said there was up to the law.
No, we were not breaking the law with the old system, just in terms of generating reports as required by laws or for district reports, requests for information. It's very difficult and timely to get the system, to get the system to provide the information or the data that's needed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Director Bilal?
I just wanted to highlight that as part of this, that we get to receive a State of Oregon Infrastructure Finance grant of 1.3 some odd million to improve the seismic work that's being done as part of our remodel for Franklin. It's just really exciting. It's a great example, again, of how we're leveraging our bond dollars to get the maximum, maximum for our dollar. And again, I just want to call out that there's contracts here for the work at Ainsworth, Woodlawn, Hayhurst, and Stevenson, both for seismic science and ADA accessible. So I just didn't want that to get lost.
Thank you very much. Yes, summer improvement projects for the summer. It's very exciting just to see these moving forward. Okay, thanks so much. So the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? All right. Business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero with student representative Jaswell voting.
Yes.
Yes, excellent. Okay, and now the moment we've all been waiting for, which is, first, we're going to convene as the Budget Committee and we're going to hear the Superintendent's Budget Message tonight. So the purpose of our initial Budget Committee meeting is to receive the Superintendent's Budget Message and receive the budget document. The Budget Committee will not entertain public testimony on the proposed budget at this time, but we are having a series of town halls and I'll mention those at the end for the dates to make sure folks have those. Hopefully you've been seeing that in your email and on Facebook and so forth and through schools and backpacks. We've been enjoying those a lot. So tonight is the first time the Superintendent is presenting us with a budget. And to clarify again, we're just simply receiving the Budget Message tonight. We're not going to be discussing it or asking questions. We're hearing that. So with that, Superintendent Smith, would you please present your Budget Message and proposed budget?
I would be happy to. And you see this student artwork that's up on the screen at this moment?
Wow.
Is the cover of our budget book. And one of the things we do each year is we have our students submit potential artwork for the cover. And I'm going to read you what this student's statement is about their art. This is done by Sehwa Pa, who's an eighth grader at Hosford Middle School. It's titled Flying and the statement by the artist is, "Since I was young, I have always wanted to fly. Seeing a swan so calm and graceful calms me down and allows me to think of my future. I still think someday I will be able to fly, maybe not with wings, but through my imagination." So that is the cover of our budget book. That will be announced. And the official book then gets delivered to the board this evening. Okay, so, and I'm going to tell you guys all, this is kind of a settle-in because I'm going to walk you through a number of things that are describing some complexities, but trying to do this visually, but also connect what's been building from one year to the next, okay? So, and this has been a kind of complex budget year. So first of all, our process. We've done a number of town halls that have been interactive town halls with the community leading up to tonight. And we also separated our budget into two different parts. So in March 9th, I presented a budget framework and the school staffing plan to the board. And then the following day, on March 10th, we actually punched go and started our staffing process. This was significant, so it was a week earlier than our staffing process began last year and five weeks earlier than the previous year. So we're really excited to be out and actually starting our process earlier and then being out hiring our new staff earlier. And I'm going to just say, yeah, that is a little bit of a moment because this has been something we've been working on for years. And part of why we were able to do this and go out and do our staffing is because of our local option. So this was really specifically, Portland has the opportunity to pass a local option. We had it renewed that actually generated additional revenue that's no longer being directed to urban renewal, but comes straight to education and increase in tax assessments and unwinding of compression that actually gave us dollars to work with before we understood what the number was going to be in the state school fund. So hence, we were able to go out and act early in March. We then continued on with more town halls and then tonight is the proposed budget and budget message. We'll continue with more town halls that are interactive, so they're not hearings, they're real dialogue with the community. We then have, hear from the Citizens Budget Review Committee and they'll do a report on the proposed budget and they have been meeting diligently, exploring different parts of, portions of the budget and really diving deep. So they come and they provide the board with a report on what their thoughts are on the budget. The board then, as the Budget Committee votes to approve a budget, May 26th. TSCC reports on the approved budget in late June and then the board that evening votes on adopting a budget. So that's the process and where we are in it. Okay, so our strategic framework that guides our development of a budget, first of all, our vision, so equity and excellence, every student, every teacher, and every school succeeding. Our mission, which is every student by name, prepared for college, career, and participation as an active community member regardless of race, income, or zip code. We have our strategic framework as a district. So this is really looking at cultural transformation of the district, collaboration, service, equity, excellence, accountability, and sustainability. It, of course, centers around every student succeeding and then has effective educators, access to rigorous, relevant programs for all students, collaboration with our families and communities, and providing students with the support they need to access that rigorous, relevant program. And then underlying is, are the foundational elements, modernizing our infrastructure and a stable operating model. And this framework for overall, the district as a whole, has guided our budget development for, I'm going to say, like five or six years at this point. This, the successful schools framework, actually guides change at an individual school level. And these, by doing work on where we're getting the outcomes that we're looking for in our individual schools and where we see the success happening for our kids, these are the elements that are in place. And so it is the framework that we're using to drive change at an individual school level. So again, equity at the core. We're looking at a focus on the culture of the school, quality assessment and quality instruction as being like core elements that need to be present in any one of our schools, professional learning communities and really fostering that as a way of professional growth for the staff and teachers, staff and leaders in the school, and then school and family partnerships. So this is the individual school strategic framework. And then finally, our milestones framework that, again, we've been using for the last seven or eight years, which is really looking at an individual student's journey through our system and at key transitions, what are the outcomes that predict success at the next level? And that those are the places we're really focusing on our investments. Where have we been? So I'm going to start you back in 2007 because at that point, you had a new superintendent, who was me. When I came into this job, we had an achievement gap that was significant across the system. It had been persistent over time and we knew that it was unacceptable. And even in schools that we were viewing as being successful schools, there was a dramatic achievement gap. Our graduation rate, calculated by the old one-year method, was 68.5%. Calculated by what we then started to do a new four-year cohort method, meaning we were looking at a student as they entered ninth grade and how long, how many students actually made it through and graduated four years later. That rate for Portland was 53% and that was really dramatic news for us as a community. So, and that we were one of the first, actually, in Portland Public Schools to pilot this new methodology of looking at the graduation rate. It was actually a more authentic way to say who starts and what kind of support do they need in order to graduate four years later? The one-year method was really looking at who starts 12th grade and who finishes 12th grade rather than over that whole four years. So a big difference in the two methods, but dramatic news for us. Our school buildings aging and we knew that we had classrooms that were not meeting the needs, a lot of conversation about rain coming through the roof right on into classrooms and, you know, being collected by buckets. So just knowing that we did not have, we had an aging infrastructure. We were just coming off of an enrollment decline and had lost 11,934 students over an 11-year period. So every year, huge impact on what's going on in schools and a dramatic impact on the resources to staff our schools. And we were weary from two decades of budget cuts coming off of BALT Measure 5. So just to say, parents who had been in fundraising, every year, their kids have been in school and being really exhausted from having to fundraise to meet the basic needs of the kids in our schools. So this is context as I stepped in. Here's our enrollment decline over that 11-year period. This is the state funding for K-12 education from 2003 to 2015. And what you see, the red bar is the K-12 School Fund, the blue bar is funding for education overall in the state of Oregon. And it went from being 44.8% of the budget in the '03-'05 biennium, down to being 38.8% of the state budget in 1113. And then this past biennium, it ticked up one percentage point. But the experience of having a declining But the experience of having a declining resource to work with, you see now both our declining enrollment and the declining investment at the state level. So, a real experience in terms of what's different and why people don't feel like they have as much. They don't. This picture shows you since 2003, '05, the pink bar at the end, the 52.7 percent, is the overall change in expenditure over that period with the Oregon General Fund and lottery spending. The blue bars represent how much of the, what's the change in spending in education. The green bars are what are the changes in every other part of the state budget. So, again, you see that even as spending has gone up in different areas of Oregon's state budget, spending for education has not kept pace. So, this is one of the conversations we're having down in Salem. Okay, so, we also established five priorities at that point in time, and essentially, it was looking at, we wanted student achievement to increase for all and narrow the gap, and that that should be a pretty steady trajectory of increase for every student, but also significant narrowing of the gap. Our graduation rate, we wanted an increase for all, and we wanted to narrow the gap. We wanted to build a foundation for organizational change with equity at the core, so we wanted this to really be the thing that was driving all of our work. We wanted to pass a capital bond, because we had not passed one since 1995, and really look at how we started to address the infrastructure needs in our schools and start to build new schools. And we wanted a contract with our teachers that increased our capacity to have the best teachers in every classroom. And again, some of that was also looking at a contract that had been like an archaeological dig of you just could see a new chapter and a new chapter, and together, we were really knowing we needed to clean up that contract and have it really express the work we wanted to be doing together with our teachers' union, and regard it as our contract, not the teachers' contract. So, a big cultural change as well. How have we done with all of those things? So, student achievement, we have had favorable progress on educational milestones despite the recession and significant annual budget reductions. The achievement gap between white students and students of color has narrowed at key milestones. Our graduation rate, the four-year graduation rate increased 17 percentage points from 53 percent to 70 percent. And the gap between white students and students of color is narrowing. Our five-year graduation and completion rate is now 82 percent. I'm just going to do that one, too. And you'll see that one. So, here's our four-year cohort graduation rate over time, the 17 percent increase. Our graduation and completion rate, so this is, the gray bar is four-year graduation rate, the purple bar, four-year completion rate, meaning that also includes GEDs, and the five-year completion rate, which includes both graduation and completion. So, there you have our 82 percent, but we've gone up in all of those consistently every This is that broken down by race and ethnicity, and you see, again, significant changes over time. Okay, here, what you see is the graduation rate increase compared for the whole state of Oregon, so it's been a six percentage point gain over, since 2009, '10. Here's PPS over that same time period with a 17 percentage point gain. So, just for you to have some frame of reference that this is a big deal, that we've, you have to start from wherever you start from, and we've made a 17 percentage point gain. So, there you go. I know. I know. Here's our completion rate increase in comparison to Oregon. So, again, a three percentage point gain for the state as a whole, an 11 percentage point gain for Portland Public Schools. And this is the one that I'm going to just take a minute to explain to you, because what you see on that blue line there, this, the blue line, that's the old one-year method, okay? So, back, our high point since 2000 was a 78 percentage point one-year graduation rate. If we had carried that, this method, through all the way to today, that one-year rate is 82 percent. So, we've now surpassed our highest rate since 2000 with our one-year graduation rate. Here's the point, we went from the one-year method, we were at 68 percent, and we went to the four-year method, and we started at the 53 percent, and we're now up to 70 percent. So, again, by either method of calculating, we have gone up significantly and surpassed what our previous rate would have been since 2000. So, again, big deal, I'm just going to say, a huge, just gratitude for everyone's work to make this happen. So, thank you to everybody for your part in this happening. Okay, so, equity at the core, and this was one where we really set out to say, we're looking at policy, we're looking at people, we're looking at practice, and we're looking at partnerships. Our Board passed a racial educational equity policy. We passed an equity in public purchasing and contracting policy to really guide the business. So, PPS is one of the largest employers in this area, does an incredible amount of business, and as we are getting ready to pass a bond, hugely important, who it is we do business. We did not have an MWESB or Minority Women in Emerging Small Businesses policy. This is essentially what this is. And PPS also uniquely added a portion of our policy that talks about students and having students exposed and opportunities to participate with the folks that we do business with. So, again, this was another groundbreaking policy. We passed an affirmative action policy, which we previously did not have, really looking at how we are intentionally diversifying and measuring how we diversify our workforce. We've been doing organization-wide racial equity training over the last seven years, using an equity lens in our budgeting over the last three years, and just completed a revision of our enrollment and transfer policy to align with our equity policy. So, a significant amount of laying foundation for what we're looking for as an entire organizational cultural change that better meets the needs of our students. Capital bond, we worked on putting together, along with a community advisory group, a long-range facilities plan that is a 30-year plan to renovate and rebuild our system. We then passed a $482 million bond in 2012, and are well into implementation of that bond. So, we are rebuilding two high schools and have one K-8 that are underway, ready to break ground, May 2nd and May 16th on the two high schools. We have planning for a third high school rebuild that will then begin. We have two summers of roofing, seismic upgrades, accessibility, and science labs impacting 28 schools and 27 more schools that are teed up for work this summer. And then, by the time this bond is complete, 63 schools will benefit from a summer improvement work. So, we're really excited about that, and we're now working on the plans as part of this bond, the master plans for the three high schools that will be part of, we hope, bond number two. And then, finally, the contract with our teachers. As one of the key features of this new contract is the streamlined hiring process, that is our ability to hire earlier, as I mentioned previously, and increases our organizational capacity to have the best teachers in front of our students. We added instructional time. We've been doing joint training on our contract for principals and our PAT building reps, and established a joint workload committee with a million-dollar budget that is intended to help us do more responsive resolution of issues. So, again, exciting changes in just the culture that we're trying to build about how we do our work together. And then, the other ones I just wanted to call out, because it's been significant work in terms of stabilizing our operating model. We've done a lot of work with the legislature to stabilize and increase funding for schools, and this is like district as in the big D district, meaning all of our partners, our parents, our union, our school board, our lobbyists, our students. We've had a huge presence in Salem, really trying to impact the dialogue of having education front and center and adequately funding our schools. We've passed local option levies and added teachers. The Portland Arts Tax has allowed us to add teachers, art teachers for grades K through five, and we are no longer a declining enrollment district. We have grown over the last six years. So, here is our last six years where we've got 2,400 student growth in that timeframe. So, again, this changes our picture dramatically. Okay, so, also, over the last biennium, and part of why I want to make this visible now is we're continuing to build on investments we've made. So, these are, these have been like, how do we continue to add capacity and strategically invest in our schools, but then continue to build on those investments and not change gears and create instability in the very system we're trying to create stability in? So, over, in the last biennium, so 2013 to 15, we've added teachers. We added 180 new teaching positions in the past year alone. We've improved our counselor ratios, so our high schools went from 400 to one, then to 350 to one, to 300 to one. Our grades K through eight, this past year was the first year we actually had a counseling presence in every one of our elementary K and middle schools. This next year, we're looking at improving that to actually have a minimum of a full-time counselor in each one of our schools regardless of size. That's a big deal and a big distance. At the beginning of this biennium, we still had 10 small schools that had no counseling presence whatsoever, and we know huge need for this. We've added paraprofessionals and educational assistants, and we started, developed a new teacher-mentor program and then have grown it and increased the capacity. It's been a highly successful, both mentoring and support program that I think ensures that the hires, new hires we're making find success in Portland Public Schools, and it's been powerful both for the people serving as mentors as well as for the teachers being mentored, so we hope to continue to grow it. We've differentiated resources based on the needs of students in schools, so our equity formula for staffing increased to 8 percent and includes combined underserved as one of the measures, and we've done additional staffing capacity for focus and priority schools. We've also expanded our focus on early learners, both increasing the number of schools with our early kindergarten transition, so working with young people as they're getting ready to be kindergartners, to practice being kindergartners during the summer, and for their parents to come in and get involved with the school before they let go of their students and send them off on that first day of school. The parents are already familiar with the school community and have met other parents. Highly successful, small amount of investment, so that one we're growing. We've also added the Clarendon Early Learning Site this past year in North Portland, and will continue to grow our early learning presence. We increased instructional time, so we added two days this past year. Our focus and priority schools had the option to add professional development days in order to preserve instructional time. We continue to increase our high school course offerings. So, in 2012, '13, the ratio in our high schools was 28, a little over 28 students to one teacher. In '13, '14, it went down to 25, a little over 25 to one, and then '14, '15, 23.65 to one. So, that's a huge change over a short amount of time in terms of what kind of staffing we have in our high schools. We've increased our wraparound support services. We've added a coordinator for our tag services. We've expanded our dual-language immersion capacity, so we added four new dual-language immersion schools and a new language, Vietnamese. We've added CTE staffing and equipment. We've added career coordinators and then brought them up to full-time in all of our high schools. We've expanded our arts programming, so our arts teachers are present in all of our K-5s. We added arts coordination again, which I'm going to tell you has made a huge difference, having an arts TOSA who coordinates what we're doing with the arts and provides support at a district level. And then, the Board just voted to do a one-time investment in musical instruments within the last couple of months that was, has made a huge, filling the gap of instruments that we're missing in our band and music programs. And then, athletics have expanded dramatically. We've added coaches, trainers, transportation, and middle grades programming. So, this is a big deal to start building the capacity in our middle grades and offering those opportunities to our middle-grade students as they're, in each of the feeder patterns as they're heading to their high schools and gaining their enthusiasm for athletics. So, that's a big, a big amount of things that we've done in the last biennium that we wanted to see sustained and then built on in the coming budget. Where do we go from here? So, our economy is improving, and I put in red just potential for the increased state investment. Right now, this is still a dialogue with the legislature, and I would characterize this as being at fragile stability as opposed to true, like, reinvestment budget. But we still have the potential of increased state investment. We're implementing the current bond and planning for the next one, so the 30-year facility plan, and our enrollment is increasing. So, at this point, we've got the last six years of growth. What we are now planning for the next decade for another 5,000 students. So, it's a really changed picture than where we were a minute ago, and our challenges right now are how are we planning for the influx of new students? Our three priorities that are driving our work, we want 100 percent of our third graders reading at grade level by the end of third grade. We're looking to reduce exclusionary discipline, so the disproportionality by 50 percent, and then reduce exclusionary discipline overall by 50 percent. And we're looking to accelerate the trajectory of increase in our graduation and completion rate. So, those are our three big driving priorities. Now, our state funding update. This is a picture we showed early in the budget process that we developed along with our education partners around the state, so 197 districts, OEA, COSA, OSBA, so the Confederation of Oregon School Administrators, school boards, teachers, and a number of the other advocacy organizations. What we looked at was to provide for the legislature, what does it mean at these different funding levels? And this one, the 2.35, we were really saying you're underfunding. 7.5 is the fragile stability, and the 7.8 is an investment budget. So, this was where, how we entered the legislative session. We are still advocating for at least a $7.5 billion state school fund appropriation for the biennium from the legislature for K-12. Current status is the legislature has allocated a $7.255 billion funding level as a floor, what they're characterizing as a floor level of investment. So, again, we're saying great, and the dialogue continues. We're still looking for a higher level of funding for K-12 education. The state school numbers, the fund, our funding comes through the Oregon Department of Education, and the Legislative Revenue Office provides the numbers and analysis to the legislature. And you've heard over the last, whatever, month or so, differing numbers and whose numbers are right, and is it an increase or is it a decrease? So, part of this is reconciling what both of those entities are using as their, part of their calculation, and they've gone through some efforts to try and get in sync the two, the numbers that they're using. Then, you have ODE, so the Department of Education, who revises the estimates regularly. So, the two estimates so far for 2015, '16, we've had an estimate in February and an estimate in March. And I'm showing you this, because you've got to kind of understand the moving target we have as we're working to develop a budget. So, the original February number for us, 6,994 per ADMW, so weighted average daily membership, which is revised in March to be 7,175. And then, here's the Legislative Revenue Office number, which is different than either one of these. So, we've got like a swing in what's the difference between the, like, we've got some decision-making around what numbers we use and what ones do we trust and what ones are going to really not have us overestimating or being too aggressive in what we think we're going to actually receive in money that allows us to plan, but also not being too conservative. So, and then, here's the dollar amount it generates for us. So, the, our original, the February to March difference, the difference between these two numbers, part of what happens in a biennium, we generally will budget to use 49 percent in year one and 51 percent in year two, so that we're able to sustain whatever investments we made in year one and plan for whatever kind of an increase. What happens in this March estimate is that they're proposing that to be a 50/50 split, right? So, planning to use 50, proposing that we all use 50 percent in year one and bank on the fact that they're going to put more money in in year two. So, you've got to make a calculation of are you willing to take that risk, because otherwise you're making cuts in year two. This number also assumes a higher growth in local revenue, and they reduce the number of carve-outs or things that they take off the top. of carve-outs or things that they take off the top and fund out of the state school fund, okay? So there's just different calculations that have gone into producing the March number. So the proposed budget for PPS, I'm proposing a $579 million general fund spending plan for 2015, 16. The budget assumptions that go into that plan is, include the recently renewed local option and those increases allowed us to hire teachers back in the plan that I put forward on March 9th. And the three things, and I described these for you earlier, part of what made that go up, we had no pullout for urban renewal because of the, when we renewed the local option. The assessed value has increased of our property in, in this area and compression is unwinding. So we had increased revenue in our local option for this next year. Our enrollment projections are going up by another 585 students and I'm counting on a beginning fund balance that is $10 million higher than the current budget ending fund balance. So that, those are all the assumptions that are going into the spending plan. In terms of assumptions about the state school fund, the actual budget document that was prepared back in, was based on the February ODE number. What we now know because the March forecast has come out, I'm actually going to use the March forecast for my recommendations this evening. However, for Portland, I'm going to recommend that we hold to the 49%, 51% split over the biennium so that we can sustain whatever investments we make this year so that we not do the 50/50 recommendation but that we do 49/51, which has been our practice. So I'm, I'm recommending that we stick to that practice. So the revised numbers that are reflected right here will be, the bolded ones, the revised March number, and again, that's a $10.6 million difference which gets us to the 579 million. Okay, so the March estimate increases our funding by 10.6 million. The problem of the shift, and I just described this to you, it basically, you use money in the first year you can't sustain in the second year. The proposed solution to that is that we also designate an amount out of, out of that that we count as assigned contingency rather than unassigned contingency that we are holding until year two expressly to end up getting us to the equivalent of a 49/51. We'll just earmark it specifically for that purpose so it's not regarded as a general unassigned contingency. We say this is how we intend to use it. If the $7.255 billion in the state school fund, it remains our number, my proposed unassigned contingency is that we hold 3.5 in unassigned contingency. If we actually, if it ultimately goes up to a $7.5 billion state school fund allocation, then my recommendation is that we budget for a 4.5 unassigned contingency. Okay, so now the framework and what's kind of guiding the recommendations you'll see. One is to sustain and build upon the current levels of service to students, families, and schools to, so again, what I described earlier, keep building on the investments we've already made. Sustain and build upon the strategies that impact our three priorities, so early literacy, the reducing disproportionate discipline, accelerating graduation and completion rates. Third, to strengthen our capacity at schools just generally and to strengthen our organizational capacity to support schools. So school staffing, and you've seen this already but I'm going to keep going through just so that you are, you see this as in its entirety. So the school staffing plan was presented on March 9th and we have already been implementing. Guidelines, the guiding principles, that we will invest some resources by school type and achievement needs, not just by numbers of students, and this has been a shift in the last couple of years that will really differentiate resource, that will provide enough time for resources to shift culture and build capacity, not get impatient and say, "Oh, it didn't work yet, so we're going to change and do a new thing," where you create the churn and you don't ever see what strategies are being successful. That will maintain the equity formula within the staffing ratio, that will provide non-formula additions to address specific considerations that are unique to an individual school or circumstance, and that we hold a set aside pool of FTE so we can address program challenges, some of which are allocated in the spring and some of which we hold until the fall and expressly in the fall. It's then when, where we're looking at what's, the difference between what we predicted would happen with students and what actually happened. So we want to be able to be responsive at the point we know that kindergarten being one of the prime places that it may look different. Staffing formula, this is the order it occurs in, so you end up with the ratio FTE that's assigned by size first there and then ratio FTE via the equity allocation, then we have school-wide support table and those numbers, then non-formula FTE, full-time equivalent, and then total general fund FTE. So just the general structure of how we staff our schools. The equity formula in that staffing allocation, and I described earlier that we hold 8% out as part of the equity allocation, 4% of that is based on free and reduced lunch or direct certification meal status and 4% of the ratio is then calculated based on combined underserved. And that includes students from one of the four historically underserved racial groups, qualifying for special ed, ELL, or eligible for free meals by direct certification. Our equity allocation ranges from .5 to 7.2 FTE, so really dramatically different impacts depending on what, how that calculation shows up for your individual school. And I will say, the first year that we did this equity allocation, like what it really meant was you had less, less dramatic impact of cuts because we were really in a cut budget, so it basically cushioned the blow. This year, then we kind of did a year that was just like barely in a break even, so probably not. This year, there's enough to really see a difference and we've asked, like, we're looking to measure what's the difference that you can tell in your, schools know what their allocation is, that was their equity allocation, and we're really asking them to tell us, okay, what difference did it make? We want to be able to know that and measure that, so. Our school staffing priorities for this year, sustaining teachers and classified staff that we added of the 13, 15, ensuring access to the core program at all grade levels, improving our middle grades elective offerings, our college and career readiness staffing for both middle grades and high schools, counselors, school secretaries, educational assistants, and paraprofessionals. Okay, so now the specifics. So early literacy priority, the school-based staffing, we had educational assistance support for kindergarten where we added .5 educational assistance in each kindergarten class for schools with 50% or more combined underst, historically underserved, so 21.5 FTE. We did target early, targeted early literacy support for focus and priority schools, so adding a teacher to work on early literacy with students and teachers, 8 FTE. Full-day kindergarten for PPS, the impact of half of the day, half a day, currently half a day is paid for by the state school fund and the other half is paid for with Title I and tuition. Next year, the entirety of full-day kindergarten will be paid for with general, general fund dollars, so we'll no longer charge tuition and the title dollars we get to allocate for something else. That cost to move full-day kindergarten into the general fund for Portland Public Schools is $11 million. What, we currently have 98% of our kindergartners in full-day K, so we are not facing the same challenge that some other districts are facing where they need to add spaces or build program. We've got program, ours is shifting how we pay for program. So again, that we won't be charging tuition, we will cover this by general fund. Reducing exclusionary discipline, and I called this out as one of our priorities earlier, our investments that we think specifically impact this, counselors in all of our K5s, so with a minimum of a full-time FTE in every school regardless of size, and then above that calculating at a 400 to one ratio, so that adds another 14.5 FTE. Counselors in our K8 and middle schools, again, with a base of a full-time counselor and then calculating at a 400 to one, 21.5 FTE. And then the educational assistance support for kindergartners, we also believe this one has a direct impact on this priority, so I just listed it again but didn't name the FTE again. High school graduation and completion, a number of things, so increasing the elective offerings at middle grades, K8 and middle school. We are prioritizing art and music so that if a school does not offer art or music in the middle grades, we're asking them to prioritize that first with this FTE ad. We have some schools that are adding the AVID program this year and, and a college and career readiness coordination. So there's different strategies in different schools but we've got a prioritization guidance for schools as their staffing. College and career readiness in high schools, we're adding AVID coordination support, so a .5 for coordination or, so college and career readiness and AVID, so sorry, this is a combination of a number of different things and again, school-specific, it may look a little different. .5 is for coordination support and 1.0 is for adding teacher capacity. High school teachers, we've added 20 more high school teachers. And then the school-wide support table, and this is the table that really has the core of support that you have in any school regardless of size, that then, that includes like your principal, your assistant principal, or your vice principal, your librarians, your counselors. And there are thresholds at which you start to get additional people. On this school-wide support table, we've added an additional high school vice principal at 1,600 students, so that's what those two are. Athletics, we've had our, sorry, our middle school athletic director to full-time and our high school athletic directors to full-time. The high school athletic directors will now be responsible for managing cluster-wide athletics and the district-wide athletic director and high school principals will prioritize how they operationalize this. Outdoor school, this has been a huge topic just about every year and I'm really happy to say, so we went to three days as we were cutting budgets in order to really preserve outdoor school for our kids because it's been such a treasured program. This year, and this is funded with resolution dollars through the Multnomah Education Service District, we're moving ourselves back to a full week, so yay. And this impacts the overall programming of outdoor school for a lot of other districts as well, so we're excited about this. Okay, strengthening our school capacity to address all priorities, school secretaries, we're looking at every school having a minimum of two full-time secretaries, meaning 40 hours a week. We add another 5.63 FTE to make that happen. And our educational assistant and paraeducator substitutes add five full-time EA substitutes and five full-time paraeducator substitutes. So next, we have centrally allocated resources. I hope you're all hanging in here with this one.
Yeah.
Are we doing it okay? Yeah, yeah, good. That's what I'm looking for, that's good. Okay, so PPS budget proposal was, as I mentioned before, developed based on the ODE February estimate and this is what's reflected in the published budget proposal document. What's included in that part of the proposal is prioritizing continuity of services to students. So we had a number of things that were grant-funded that represent wraparound services to students or what we would consider now core services for students that are part of how they're achieving the success that they're achieving, so we were looking to sustain that level of service. So our early warning system staff, $235,000 maintains attendance caseworkers in the general fund that were previously grant-funded. We have a social worker who continues, which continues our current capacity to supervise masters of social work interns and gives us more capacity to do wraparound support. We had wraparound services for Roosevelt, Franklin, and Madison that were previously funded by the High School Graduation Initiative Grant that goes away, that we're looking to sustain. We have, the next one is an early learning program move from Lane to, from Creative Science to Lane, and this is moving some early learning head, and head start classrooms from Creative Science to Lane and creating a new early learning center. So these are the costs to move and relocate that resolves an overcrowding issue and actually lets us establish a new early learning center. And then the final one, community-based organization alternative slots, this is actually the same number of slots, so the same capacity but an increase in the cost per slot that is driven by formula, but it allows us to maintain the current level of service to those kids. Services for students that leverage other funding sources, we had an opportunity this year with Multnomah County to add some, some more attendance folks who really track and do individual attendance tracking in a couple of our clusters that we wanted to continue to grow that capacity and Multnomah County will match us if we are able to invest here. Similarly, Multnomah County will match us being able to add mental health professionals. We were excited to have this kind of a partnership with Multnomah County to be able to add both of these. AVID, we have a match from Miller, Miller Foundation and the Nike School Innovation Fund that this investment adds three high school sites, another two in planning year, that will do planning year this next year, six middle grade sites and one elementary site. So, and what we've previously done, we had previously had three high schools and we're building back through the clusters of those high schools to build the, build AVID capacity, so we're excited to have private partners who are helping us build this capacity in the district. The next one, continuing to build staff capacity to support students, is adding to the school climate and restorative practices. And again, this is part of how we are supporting our staff. This is the restorative justice that you've heard us talk about, positive behavior interventions and supports, and some other strategies that are professional development, support for teachers, counselors, and administrators that impact school climate, school culture, and ability to have other outcomes besides excluding kids from school. And finally, in this section, we have a couple things that were about policy implementation. So the board this past year passed the enrollment and transfer policy update, which then, what was made visible in the financial impact was the addition of enrollment and transfer center staff, a rider, GIS mapping capacity, and a focus option review. So this is the dollar amount that was made visible at the time we passed the policy. And then the second one was dual-language immersion transportation, so adding transportation for equity of access to those programs. Okay, next one, the additional of the investments that are based on the March estimate from ODE, and these are not in the published budget document because we have the numbers after that document was published, but here are the, here is what I have on that list with the additional revenue. So certified media specialists or librarians, and this is a $3.1 million investment, it adds at least a .5 in our K5s, K8s, and middle schools. It adds, has 18 schools that get a full FTE and 47 schools that get a .5 FTE. We use the combined underserved criteria and all schools will have full-time library services, so there's some combination, so that would be a really big deal.
[applause]
The school climate and restorative practices and beyond diversity training, again, professional development supports, which just builds on the previous investment but adds, lets us do that again in, in a larger number of schools. It adds CTE middle grades, a seventh-grade hands-on learning experience. So we were looking at the outdoor school being what's happening for sixth graders, what is the thing that happens for seventh graders, and we were looking at a on, hands-on learning experience of some sort, be that a Makerspace or something else, so that allows us to do that. It allows us to sustain the increase we made this year in individual school consolidated budgets, which was a big deal and gave our school principals some room to move on things that they consider priority, so we would love to be able to sustain that same level of increase in the coming year. It adds campus monitor substitute capacity, and again, minimal amounts, as was pointed out earlier, these are like small amounts of substitute capacity but we desperately need it. The board audit committee is recommending a total allocation of $200,000 for a performance auditor for the coming year, so this $120,000 is added to, what, $80,000 is already in the budget, bringing us to the $200,000 investment there. And then finally, technology upgrades. This adds our, a student body fund management system that allows us to have a consistent management system across all our schools rather than having individual schools all buying off-the-shelf software that doesn't connect to each other, so it's highly desirable that we have a single system that our schools are able to use to manage funds. So that's, this right here represents the actual budget proposal is this list. The next list is if we actually get up to the $7.5 billion number, which we are going to do, like, I'm just going to say, "Yeah!"
[applause]
If we get there, then we're looking at adding another 30 teachers, making some other additional invest, equity investments, which includes making some other additional equity investments, which includes tuition relief for like summer school, evening scholars, things that end up making those more accessible to our students rather than having any tuition associated with participating. Technology support for schools and system upgrades. So we had, earlier in the year, we heard from IT about leasing our technology rather than purchasing. That then has a built-in way that we are recycling as well, but that puts us on a consistent refresh schedule. So some of this allows us to begin that leasing arrangement. It also upgrades some of our HR and school choice system software. Next one, supplies and supports for schools. And this is an assortment of, so our content-based ELD materials, support for inclusion, professional development for language arts, materials adoption, and some counseling support are included in that one. Uh-oh, what do I do? Quick, thank you. I know, you are all feeling rescued, aren't you, that it's gonna cut me off? I'm going for a filibuster here. Okay, so buildings, this is, adds to our building maintenance budget and the capacity to also, in our civic use of buildings office, where we have the community using the buildings, it allows us to be more responsive in, in community requests for use of our buildings. And then finally, down at the bottom, you see the unassigned contingency improves to, from 3.5% to 4.5%. Okay, so next, because we've had some significant conversation in the last several weeks about how we go about looking at compensation, I've asked Sean Murray and Lisa Gardner to come up and do a, here's the structure of how we look at compensation as an organization, and then I'll take you through what compensation looks like in this budget. So Sean.
All right. Good evening, Board Member Superintendent Smith. I'm Sean Murray, Chief Human Resources Officer. With me this evening is Lisa Gardner, who is our senior class comp manager. Since this is probably the first time many of you have heard of Lisa, I thought it would be good to give you some information regarding her background. Lisa's been with our HR department for approximately a year and a half and has approximately 18 years of K-12 public education experience. Throughout her career, she has been focused on adhering to equity and legal compliance in HR practices in K-12 education. In Lisa's previous role and here at PPS, she has worked extensively in classification and compensation, developing and implementing best practice models that align with the organizations she has served. Prior to PPS, Lisa worked for Long Beach Unified School District, is the third, which is the third largest, third largest district in California with peak enrollment of approximately 98,000 students. She has routinely conducted job analysis and classification and compensation studies throughout her career, from individual classification, reclassification studies to broad, full-scale job families. Lisa has also served as a personnel commissioner for four years in her home school district, Los Alamitos, upholding principles of merit and equity in public education. So we are very fortunate to have Lisa's expertise in our HR department. Now, we're here to give you a general compensation overview. Starting with the question of how is compensation used? Well, according to SHRM, which is the Society of Human Resources Management, it states that compensation is used as a tool to recruit and retain qualified employees, increase employee morale and satisfaction, reward and encourage peak performance, achieve internal and external equity, and reduce turnover and encourage organizational loyalty. In developing a classification compensation plans for the Human Resources Department, we're using best practices models for developing compensation plans. We first start with conducting job analysis for all of our positions, then evaluate job and update classification plans and job descriptions. Next, we determine hierarchical levels within our organization. Then we review and establish pay models and salary ranges. From there, we develop appropriate salary structure. We communicate findings to district leadership, employees, and community. And then we monitor the plan and implement changes as necessary. And then we just start the cycle over again. Now, factors that we consider when setting compensation are equal pay, whether there is disparate treatment, adverse impact, legal compliance, recruitment and retention issues, external market conditions, internal alignment of our positions, as well as organizational economy and our collective bargaining agreement with all of our union partners. Now I'll turn it over to Lisa.
Thank you, Sean. Let's go ahead and begin by looking at the equal pay principle, disparate treatment, adverse impact, and legal compliance, all of which are interrelated. Human Resources Management is greatly influenced and shaped by the state and federal laws governing employment issues. Regulations and laws govern all aspects of Human Resources Management, including recruitment, selection, and compensation. Employment laws such as the Fair Labor Standards Act, the Equal Pay Act Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, the Ledbetter Fair Pay Act, and the Age Discrimination in Employment Act are designed to balance out the employee-employer relationship so that employers cannot discriminate against their employees. Under these laws, workers have the right to fair compensation. The purpose of these laws is not to diminish the employee-employer relationship, but rather to make it more equal and ensure that all individuals within an organization enjoy the same equal opportunities. Finding the right person for the right job and keeping them is a common goal for all organizations. Where we are right now and where we want to be as an educational institution requires thoughtful and innovative strategies to alleviate the challenges we face in recruiting and retaining quality staff to support our students. Developing compensation strategies that align with the competitive market work to assist in recruiting and retaining a highly qualified leadership, professional educator, and business operations staff. The United States Department of Labor reports that between 2008 and 2009, the unemployment rate in the state of Oregon surged from 5.8% to 9.3%. Statewide unemployment peaked in 2010 at 9.6%. However, the state unemployment numbers have been steadily decreasing since 2011, and they have been decreasing rather quickly. In 2014, the state unemployment rate was 6.2%. As of this February, according to the State of Oregon Employment Department, the unemployment rate has continued to drop to its February 2015 rate of 5.8%. As highlighted in this newspaper article, the current unemployment rate is at its lowest point in six and one-half years. Well, what does that mean for Portland Public Schools as an employer? As more and more employment opportunities become available, top talent have greater opportunities and employment options. A tight labor market requires constant monitoring for wage and benefits inflation as organizations now find themselves at the position of competing for top talent. We are and will continue to survey the market to enable the district to make informed decisions regarding employment practices. I'll turn this back to Sean.
All right. Let's review the historical compensation practices for the district. So our first slide is a matrix that shows the salary adjustment history for all of our represented employees. Now, I'd like to note that for our viewers at home, this information may be difficult to read and would like to let everyone know that we will have this information online for them to review as well. Now, as represented employees, these adjustments were negotiated as part of the collective bargaining process. The matrix shows that throughout troubling economic times, the district has made every effort possible to provide salary adjustments to our represented employees through COLAs, which are also known as cost-of-living adjustments, and/or salary increases. This, you will also notice that in 2011, 2012, the district was not able to provide cost-of-living adjustments to any of our represented groups. Now, the next slide represents the salary adjustment history for our non-represented employees. These are employees and district leadership that are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. Over the same time span as the represented groups that you just saw, the district offered minimum COLAs as opportunity allowed. In 2012, 2013, non-represented employees, in addition to not receiving COLAs or salary steps, received a, received as many as 10 furlough days during this period.
Earlier, we discussed our practice of surveying the market for comparability. For our licensed staff, we survey 19 local area school districts. In determining comparability, our criteria is to select agencies with like or similar jobs who are within our recruiting area and who are as close in size to our organization as possible. In business operations, in addition to our K-12 school districts, we also survey local public agencies for comparable positions. Again, the criteria include proximity to Portland Public Schools, our competition for the same employees, and organizations that have business organizational hierarchies, structures, and compensation programs that are comparative to ours. We do not survey private companies as they are not required to provide us with any salary or benefit information. They also tend to offer bonuses, pay incentives, stock options, profit sharing, and other compensation that we would not offer, making them not comparable to us in developing salary recommendations.
All right. So what has the Human Resources Department been doing to move the district in the direction of a systematic classification compensation plan? For 2014-15, we developed and updated classification specifications. We implemented new senior leadership salary schedule. We developed licensed administrator salary schedule and are reviewing existing classification and compensation plan for non-represented staff. For 2015-16, we're implementing findings for non-represented staff classification and compensation study, begin reviewing existing classification and compensation plan for PFSP bargaining unit, and conducting market surveys in preparation for upcoming negotiations with our various union partners. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Superintendent Smith.
Thank you both. Okay, so, and I just wanted the tip for you to hear the overall process and structure for us before I give you the specifics for this year. So the compensation that is included within the budget plan, most of these are all, so the teachers, this is what was negotiated in the contract step increase and a 2.3% COLA. And then you see also what's included as the health insurance contribution. So two things, the other one that the board has been really conscious of and explicit over the last, like, I'm gonna say, three years, is trying to have a comparable contribution to health insurance across all our employee groups and try and bring that in line. So you're gonna, I'll show you a chart of that at the end, but you're gonna see the specific contribution in this budget right here on this chart. Second one, licensed administrators. And this, over the last two budgets, we've, we had restructured our building administrator salary schedule and have been working to bring them into market. This, this year, and I'll show you the market study on this one, we actually did a market study and did a bigger leap in terms of trying to bring them into market. We're way out of market. And then an 8% increase in their health insurance. Classified staff, a step increase and 1.5% COLA. Our SEIU custodians, step increase and 1.5% COLA. ATU, step increase and 1.5% COLA. SEIU nutrition services, a 3% COLA. DCU, 3% COLA. And then non-represented staff, which includes the number of different kinds of positions. Step increases and a 1.5% COLA for those with steps, just the 1.5% COLA for those without steps. And then continuing the work on market adjustments as Sean and Lisa just described. And then you see also over on the health insurance, different plan dates listed in terms of when things go into effect. So you'll see some variations in the upcoming chart that link back to the fact that there are different plan dates. Okay, so our licensed administrator salary schedule, this is the proposal for the market adjustments that would go into effect in this budget. And I'll just say the 75th, we were shooting for the 75th percentile of market. So this is a chart that I'm not expecting to be able to see all the data on it, but what it is at all the comparable school districts that Sean and Lisa just showed you that we do our comps with. And it shows the minimum and maximum annual salaries for those districts. This brown bar right here, this is PPS's current salary level. This would be median, and this is where we're proposing to bring people to in the coming year. And then what you see down in this box at the bottom is it gives you your starting salary, which is zero to three years' experience, a level two, four to six years' experience, level three, seven to nine years' experience, and maximum at 10 years' experience. And this one right here is for a high school principal. And also, actually, I should point out, this data is as of November 2014. So this is when all the comps are collected. Now, these salary schedules will also all go up in the coming year. So we're doing 75th percentile of the last year's data. So, I mean, we're gonna continue to be in this position where we're working to be competitive and be in market. Okay, middle school, K8 principal, here's where we've got our current, here's median, and here's where we're proposing. And again, the same levels for each one of, if you're starting, level two, level three, or maximum. This one is an elementary school principal, and you see really similar, so current, median, and our proposed number. And then this one's a vice principal in a high school. So again, current, proposed. And assistant principal in an elementary, middle school. So the pattern on all of these is pretty similar, and we're working to get ourselves up into the 75th percentile. And you have all that data in your packet that you can see the actual numbers. But I thought this was a good visual in terms of, so, and just for reference, like, looking at our, our teacher salaries are currently right about in the 75th percentile too. And again, you've got a little variation between what lane you're in, but we're looking to try and get comparability there. And there's the overall, what the actual salary schedule looks like. Part of the other change in this proposal is right now, the current has 230 workdays in a year. This would bring us to 233 workdays. I can't tell what your murmuring is, so I'm just gonna keep going. Okay, so health insurance, employer contribution. So this was, this was our direct contribution to employee health insurance, and what's the amount the employer contributes? And again, this is probably hard to see this chart, but I will just say, so we had 12,212 for every employee group except for teachers who had a 16,470 back in 2012-13. Part of our goal was to try and bring the employer contribution to a comparable level across all of our employee groups. So we've made some steady increases here. In 2015-16, the range ends up being 14,446, I think, is the base one, and our teachers, 16,992. So again, that gap is closing, and that's, that was part of our goal there, was to close that gap over time. Okay, so just to summarize our proposed budget, we're moving in the right direction. So the graduation rate has gone up 17 percentage points. We still have a lot of work to do, and the three priorities focus- We still have a lot of work to do, and the three priorities focus that work. Great appreciation to our local voters that are allowing us to invest in our schools, so we're adding teachers, counselors, media specialists, full day kindergarten, and support for our underserved students, and we're really, we're really grateful to be able to do that this year. Our state funding is less than we had hoped for, and we're going to keep working to try and ensure that we have the maximum resources being devoted to education in Oregon this year, and in Portland, that we're lucky that we have reserves to help mitigate the impact. And then finally, this budget represents a balance between funding immediate needs and ensuring the capacity to sustain the work in the coming years. So again, I'll reiterate the 49-51 being a sound fiscal strategy for us, so we can sustain our work in the second year of the biennium. And thank you all for your kind attention to this budget proposal. And then we distribute the books to the board, who we didn't give them to until after the presentation was done, so this is, there you go. Teacher trick, yeah. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Smith. So, obviously, this is the first time that we've received this information, we're gonna have an ongoing process from here as the board, so, and for the public. So, just a reminder, we're gonna have some more interactive town halls, not your father's budget hearing, where you would come and sit, where we would actually have a conversation. So, Tuesday, April 21st, at Franklin, that's at six o'clock, come on down. And then we've got another one coming up Monday, April 27th, 6:00 PM at Roosevelt, and that one, Spanish will be the primary language, so particularly Spanish-speaking community members, I know we're doing outreach to make sure folks are able to come to that. So, colleagues on the board, obviously, I'm sure you have, you know, questions and lots to discuss, so please compile those thoughts, email them in to the superintendent and the co-chairs, and then that will help us shape our discussions as we move forward in the rest of our budget process. So, thank you so much.
Chair.
Yeah, Director Kurler.
Yeah, so, I would, I would like to just, to propose a resolution that I've worked on with Directors Regan and Buell, and it simply, it's really a three-part, one, it directs the audit committee, which I know is up and running, and has this on its agenda, but it specifically directs the audit committee to come back to us next board meeting with a proposed audit regarding salary adjustments, and lays out some specifics to, to look at in that regard. Two, it directs the superintendent to temporarily freeze any market rated adjustments until that audit is complete. And three, it begins the conversation with the board on exactly our role in overseeing classifications, as well as begin the discussion on issues like compression. And, you know, and that one, I'm, so, that's, that's what it does, and so with that, I would, I would move, move the motion.
Okay, so, a second.
A second.
And Bobby seconds, all right, any discussion? So I think staff prepared, so folks have a copy of this?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Director Regan?
So, first of all, I'm excited that the audit committee is moving forward in general. We have recently brought on, and will have approved by the board, two community members for the audit committee, so that's going to be exciting. And we're looking at putting out an informal RFP, I believe is going up tomorrow, for that process. And so what that is going to be, bringing back to the board, is our independent performance auditor that reports directly to us, with the hope that we could finance three full audits with that. And so I was pleased in the budget that we, it is reflecting the new performance audit budget. So, as the audit committee was looking at proposed audits going forward, we sort of realized that we want to wait until the independent auditor is on board to really fully flush that out. But certainly, in the last two board meetings, there was some mention of the idea of administrative salary review. So I'm actually pleased to support the notion of moving that up. I think there was some surprise in the community and in the board over some of the increases in administrative salaries, and I think we just want to be as transparent as we possibly can be with the community and with the board on any of these. So the, I, I think the main thing I would mention is that we have a process as a board for reviewing salaries and wages, benefits for pretty much every employee group, and I'm particularly pleased in this, that this would sort of freeze things at this point until we get the audit, and it would also then set in motion a policy so we can be more open around what happens with central office and administrative salaries. So, I'm very supportive of this as audit chair.
So, can I ask a question about that as audit committee chair? So, so you're moving, I'm really glad to hear, because the committee started in September on their work, and so I'm really waiting and excited that we're getting close finally to hiring somebody. So, that person would be, how soon do you expect?
So, the-
This would be, the person in Tom's resolution would be a different person?
Yes. So, the informal RFP is supposed to go out tomorrow. I think the expectation is that we would get back any proposals by, I believe it's about May 7th, first or second week in May. And then we have to take the time to obviously go through those and potentially interview folks, so hopefully by the end of May or so.
Okay, and then when do you anticipate coming to the board with your recommendations that we could vote on for the list of audit topics?
I think once the auditors on board will figure that out, hopefully soon. I mean, the main thing we want to do is, we want to, I've started to try to have board members give me recommendations on possible audit topics, and that way, we can figure out who else we would like to talk to in the community, to also ask for audit topics, topics, and kind of flush those out before the auditor even comes on board. But I think we want to have the opportunity to have the auditor have some input as well. Because we may have some grand ideas, and they may say, oh my god, that audit is so big, I couldn't possibly put my arms around it, or that's so small, I think we could look at doing a little review, and maybe do two or three of them, who knows? So, I think the idea is to flush out the ideas before the auditors on board, and then get some input from the auditor and the audit committee.
And then you'd come back to the board for a vote before you proceed?
Yeah.
So that would be by the end of the school year?
Hopefully.
Or it might go into the, then-
It could go into the next, but we, I mean, I think we want to move it as quickly as possible.
There might be folks who want to, coming in, who want to have more input into it, so that could extend it further.
Yeah, so we can kind of see how that goes, yeah.
Can I just, since we're on the topic, I just throw it out, for the audit committee to consider, is, I'm glad that we've got the money in the budget, and I'd love, I'd love to have the audit committee think about alternatives to hiring a person, because it may, you know, given what the topics are, it may not be one, one-size-fits-all, and so, we have a pot of money, and we can hire the experts out of that. So, just for consideration.
But I think sometimes, if I recall correctly, I believe that Dick Tracy would bring in folks who are subject matter experts, who could assist him, and then he would have the overall management of the program.
Yeah, I mean, our budget sort of assumes, I mean, we, we could have some firms who put in proposals, and we could take a look at that, and that might give us some more flexibility in terms of who's doing the audits. I think there's some sense that, at least with our former auditor, it was actually nice that he had a really deep relationship with Portland Public Schools over time. And what this budget assumes is a full-time auditor plus money, that this auditor could then hire a researcher or analyst, and that could be an expert in a particular field. And then we would also provide, you know, obviously, supplies, computer, that sort of thing that they would need. So, I think we probably have that flexibility built in, but something for us to be thinking about as we're looking at the proposals. So the, the thing that I would also say in terms of this particular proposal is that we do have a small budget right now still for the, for an auditor for this year, and so, I, I don't think that this would have a specific negative budget impact for this year, that we have budgeted some funds for it, so.
Any other comments? Director Knoll?
So, I am, gonna be a no vote on this, and that's for several reasons. I think a lot of them were laid out by the superintendent tonight in her budget message, but I think I want to go back and think about what we've been doing over the last two years, which, and I don't think you mentioned this, or Sean didn't mention it, but the, two years ago, we had a, a audit of our Human Resources Department overall, and during that audit, they suggested that we do the classification and compensation study, which we are in the middle of, and this is no surprise to any member of this board, because we've talked about it several times. During our last contract negotiation, we talked about compression, Director Kurler mentioned compression. We talked about compression during our negotiations with the teachers, with our teachers making as much as 75 percent of market, and principals and other administrators being at 50 percent, you had the situation where the teachers were making more than the people who were supervising them. And we also talked about compression during the superintendent's review. So, none of that information is any big surprise, I don't think, to any, anybody on this board. And I also want to say that in this district, we've had a prolonged problem of losing talent. I've been on this board for six years, and I have watched some really incredibly talented people leave, and part of the reason that they're leaving is so that they can, they can provide for their, more for their families. And I don't want to see those really talented people I see when sitting in the audience tonight, I don't want to see those really talented people leaving our district. I want to see them here. And none of this is new to board members. It's been happening for all of us. In the slideshow, the superintendent showed us eighteen districts where our, that are our comparators, where our, our administrators are so far below the median, I just can't, frankly, I can't believe it. And I'm a little disappointed in us as a district, that we are paying these very talented people at a level far below what other districts are paying their administrators. We're not even at the median. We are below the median. That's embarrassing for me as a board member. And I'm concerned that the public isn't seeing that. And I'm also concerned that the public or others aren't considering that we want the very best administrators. These are the people who provide the supervision, they're the educational leaders in our schools, they do the support for our teachers. Of course, we want these people to be paid at at least the median and above, if possible. None of this is new to anybody on this board. I'm not surprised at any of this. I'm only happy that we are finally going to do something about it. So for that reason, I'm not interested in freezing anybody's salary. I am interested in the audit committee, under its regular course, taking a look at this, if we have four members on this board who would like to do that. But I don't believe we need to set up a separate audit with a separate auditor to do this work. I think that we can do it in the regular course with our audit committee. So for all those reasons, I'm gonna be of no vote on this.
Any other comments? Director Buell?
I was very surprised, so I guess it's not clear that no one was surprised, maybe I shouldn't have been. However, at the same time, one of the, one of the things that, when we look at, when we compare to other districts, and we have 75 principals, we have a lot of new principals, and we might compare to another district that has, you know, ten principals, and they've been there, and most of them have been there for a long time, I mean, those are the types of things that this would look at. Are we, are we comparing apples to apples, oranges to oranges? And I think we need to look at that, and I'm going to support the audit, because I think we need to be carefully, not just look at that case, but look at how the whole system is working, so we are not only transparent, but people out in the community can say, okay, they're paying attention, let's take a look, guess what, they've got really legitimate reasons for this, and it's nice, so let's go either direction. Do we have legitimate reasons for, for the raises, or do we not? Let's look and see. And the fact that somebody says, well, I was here two years ago, or four years, or whatever, when we did it, I had no idea we were doing it in Franklin, no idea what's what.
So, if no one else has anything, I'll just, before we vote, just thank Director Knoll for her comments, which I agree with 100 percent. And I'll just add that I'm looking forward, I'm disappointed that we haven't yet gotten our performance auditor on board, back on board, and that we haven't yet seen that list of topics for us to discuss and approve and move forward with. It'll probably be, after the time I've left the board, before we move forward with our next round of audits. But I appreciate that work, and I just cheer you on to get that happening, happening as soon as possible. And I really appreciate seeing, you know, in a number of places, both in the report tonight about the analysis that you have been doing as part of your job as the superintendent of this district, but in response to a previous management audit, as you pointed out, that pointed out the improvements we needed in our Human Resources Department. Another one was our instructional plan audit, that we revamped our entire system in response to that, and on and on. So it's a really important program that we have, that performance auditor, and I'm looking forward to having a great person on board. Okay, so with that, let's go-
Yeah, so, I'll just, I just, you know, want to say one thing, just to be clear. I actually think our principals are underpaid. And when I was referring to compression, which I want us to look at as a policy, it's this notion that, that the central administration staff should be higher, paid higher than our principals, and, you know, that's, that's a normal kind of business paradigm. I'm not sure that's the right, I'm not sure that's the right paradigm. So, A, I'd like to take a look at that. B, this audit is more than the principals, it's, it's just, it's the whole, our whole central administrative staff, and I think it's, it's a responsible fiduciary responsibility of, of this board to do that, and it could help inform our budget going forward, and it gives transparency for, to the public. So for all those reasons, I would urge my colleagues, yes.
And you would certainly want this to be on the list of any audit-
I'd like to have it done now, and brought back to the board next week, which is what the audit chair would like to do as well.
So, Director Buell?
Yeah, there's another, there's several issues around this, is why I'm supporting Director Kurler's motion. Another one is, do we really want to pay people at different levels based on what schools they are at? Is a, is a middle school principal really, should be paid higher than an elementary school principal? One of the things that I've seen occasionally is that people, you know, they have to change out of their expertise in order to move up in the pay scale. So we, maybe you have somebody who's really good at the elementary school, and, but their pay scale is less, so they move up to the middle school where they're not so good. I'd love to be able to have them, have us say, hey, those people are really good at the elementary school, so they should move up there and stay there, not necessarily have to move up to different grades where they may not, they might not be so good when they move up the line. And so it creates a structure that I don't necessarily believe that it's always good for our kids. Now, I have no idea, I haven't gone into that deep enough to see if it makes any sense, but this kind of talking about it will maybe bring out some of those issues that we really need to be discussing, that I don't think we, we really discussed probably ever.
Our professional human resources staff has been working on it in very hard, so that's what I appreciate. All right, so let's go ahead.
I just have one other comment regarding that, and that is that, you know, this board, school boards are governing boards. They are not management boards. It is not our role to set the salaries for staff, it is not our role to look at each individual staff person and determine what they should be paid. That is the role of the superintendent, and if we're not happy with what the superintendent does, we have a remedy for that. But it is not our job as a school board to get into management issues. This is a governing board.
Okay, we'd like to move to a vote, so, Director Regan?
So, I would disagree with that statement, and I think it's a mischaracterization of what we're talking about here. For every employee group other than, pretty much, our central office staff, we do discuss salary parameters, and we do discuss benefits. It is part of what we talk about in all of our contract negotiations, and we provide the superintendent with some parameters to work with. work within, and there's no surprises.
That's what we have here.
No, it's not.
How do we have to know?
And so, what we had here in terms of central staff is, we had, it's fine with me that the superintendent looks at comparables, but what we didn't have is her circling back to us and having that discussion, and that's what, we need to set some policy around that so that for every employee group, we have some capacity to set some parameters.
So, if we decide to do, have an audit on this topic, when we have our performance auditor on board, if this, if this resolution does not go forward tonight, then that could be part of the scope of the work of that, of that audit. Director Buell?
I'd just like to point out that we vote on every one of our contracts, setting the compensation, it doesn't get set by the superintendent, it gets set by the school board.
That's right.
And this is kind of saying the same thing, the compensation for administrators should be set and approved by the school board, not necessarily, it's, it doesn't get set just by the superintendent. I mean, I, I realize that as we begin to kind of transition here a little bit on the board, that now we start talking about, the board doesn't have this power in these areas, whereas before, all sorts of things, all sorts of things were taking place in, in the back rooms and decisions being made, and now, when we try and bring this out a little bit in the open, we're all of a sudden saying, oh, we're, we shouldn't be doing these things, now it's the superintendent's responsibility, but, I mean, that's a, it's just not the way that we should go. It is our responsibility, we're responsible for everything in this district that takes place, not to run it, but we're responsible for everything that takes place. And every time you disagree a little bit with the superintendent, you don't fire her, that's not the remedy. What, the remedy is to discuss these things as a board and to deal with it as a board in a public meeting, and that's exactly what we're doing, and we're just trying to say, hey, here's an issue which has come up, it's a big community issue, and we're going to take a look at it and, and see where we should be on it. And that's a totally different thing than saying, well, if we don't, if I disagree with the superintendent, I'm supposed to vote to fire her on something? Do we disagree, do we ever not, do I ever disagree with the superintendent? Well, I guess, it was nice having you around, Carol, but I guess I have to vote to fire you up.
So, thanks for sharing your perspective, Director Buell. Let's go ahead and vote now, please. So, there isn't a number on this, so, all in favor of this resolution directing-
Could we roll call it?
Sure. Resolution directing an external independent audit. Roll call, please, Ms. Houston?
Director Curler?
Oh, 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 sorry, pardon me, thank you. So, this will be number 5062. Sorry, go ahead.
Director Curler?
Yes.
Director Belile?
No.
Director Knowles?
Nope.
Director Regan?
Yes.
Director Buell?
Yes.
Chair Atkins?
No. All right, so not receiving four votes, the resolution does not move forward.
Student.
Oh, beg, beg your pardon, I'm sorry. Representative-
Yes.
Yes, all right. So, so, again, we're looking forward to hearing the performance of the audit committee come for, hire the performance auditor and come back with a list of topics, of which I assume this would be one of them, and then the board can decide to have an audit similar to this or along these same lines if they, if we so choose at that time. So, I'm looking forward to seeing that as soon as possible. Okay, so, we've already talked about the fact that we've got two town hall meetings coming up to talk about the budget, but I'll just say again, Tuesday, April 21st, 6 o'clock at Franklin, Monday, April 27th, 6 o'clock at Roosevelt, particularly if you speak Spanish, please come out, folks, for those, and the next meeting of the board will be held on Monday, April 20th. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks so much.